Now, please take your seats. If you wish to have further discussion, please do it outside. All right, thank you very much. Now, under the rules of the game, we've had the public comment, and now the developer or his representative is allowed his rebuttal time.
Good evening again. Mickey Moreau for the record.
All right, Rick, Mickey. Ladies and gentlemen, I won't say this again. If you continue speaking, I will have to have the Sergeant of Arms remove you from the room. We cannot listen to two different people at the same time. We were very clear about that. This is a board of record, so you must be silent at this time. If you wish to have a discussion, please do it outside. All right, Mickey, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to just rebut some of the points that were made afterwards. I'm gonna have Andy address one question on property values. And finally, there was some traffic issues raised, and John McWilliams will address those to conclude.
All right, thank you.
First, I gotta say I was a little bit sort of, you know, hurt and upset. I spoke for like 20 minutes, and nobody clapped for me. And I, you know, very sad to hear all that clapping, and I didn't get any clapping.
I mean, it wasn't the Golden Globes.
I mean, really, it was, I thought I did a nice job, but anyway.
And your suit's the wrong color.
Just addressing some of the points kind of in the order they were made. On the shadow study, you know, sort of, we were asked, why didn't we show more days? The sun's every day. We understand that. We showed the worst-case scenario, so on, there are other days where there are suns, but we showed you the worst-case scenario as from what the scientists tell us. That's the best we could do. As to what the advertisement says, been mentioned a few times, you spoke to the real estate folks, and, you know, there was obviously a little bit of miscommunication. But the reality is, we're asking for the Bay Shore zoning district. And we told them, what are you guys requesting? We're requesting, and I think the ad says not approved. But we were asking for the Bay Shore zoning district. They simply copied what that district provides. And it provides up to 107 units. We're not saying that you're gonna build that, and I don't think anybody would approve 107 here. But that's what the zoning district is. If there was a dis, the other, the next highest district is 25 development units an acre. If we were, if there was a district that was somewhere in the middle, we may have asked for that. But we want more than 25 an acre and less than 107, so we have to ask for the Bay Shore zoning. And the Bay Shore zoning certainly makes sense for a lot of other reasons, being it's on the water, on Biscayne Bay. So that's why we've asked for that. It does call for 100 units per acre, which would be 107 for us, but that's not what we believe will be built here. And to further that point, we're not submitting today, but certainly before council, we expect, and we've talked to staff, we expect to submit a covenant. From your comments today, and by the way, your recommendation to the council doesn't just have to be yes or no. It could be, we recommend that you vote in favor of it if you do feel that way. And if you recommend in favor, you can say with a covenant, that would address certain issues. Those issues can include, just as a suggestion based on what I've heard, a reduction in the number of units. That could be in the covenant. We would be certainly happy to work with the staff on that. To address sustainability and resiliency concerns, which were raised, and I think that's something we could certainly agree to, and we'd be happy to address. And to comply with the, to comply with the requirements of shoreline review and to go through the shoreline review process. All those things would be, would be very appropriate for a covenant. You could recommend to your council to adopt with those items. A couple people mentioned, accused us, why are we saying we're gonna bring in low-income housing? And that got a big chuckle. I never said, we wanna do low-income housing. We absolutely are not proposing low-income housing. I said luxury housing. I don't know if it was misunderstood, and I didn't speak clearly. But these are not, in no way intended to be low-income housing units. These will be nice, expensive units that we hope people would really enjoy. A concern was set about, some applause, because this construction site would cause problems. Construction sites, you know, I live near one right now. I live in the Grove, and a block away from me is a, there's a high-rise being built. This is really a mid-rise, and it does cause me some constraint, but that's the reality of living in a community. And no matter what gets built here, it will be a construction site at some point, and that will cause some difficulty for the folks around it. That's just the reality of development and of growing cities. So I'm not telling you we won't be a construction site. I'm not telling you that that won't cause a headache for some people. But no matter what gets built, it's gonna happen. There was a lot of talk about Birch J. Harris and this being a taking. And I'm not gonna get into the case law. I don't know if your attorney wants to get into the case law. But this is certainly not a taking. This is not a Birch J. Harris taking. In no way would that, would that be considered such. And again, spot zoning was mentioned, and again, I'm not gonna get into a full legal argument, but, you know, we've looked at that, and this is certainly not spot zoning. There's Bay Shore zoning already along the Biscayne Bay Shore, and only separated by a park and a right-of-way. So this would, this wouldn't even pass a motion to dismiss on spot zoning. We feel very strongly that this is not spot zoning. With that, I'd like Andy just to get up to the other podium and address property values just briefly. And after he's done, John McWilliams would love to take some time to talk to you about traffic. And with that, we will conclude and pass it to you all. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Again, Andy Dolcart, Miami Economic Associates with offices in Miami-Dade County. The issue of impact of a mid-rise building on nearby single-family housing is one that we have dealt with on a number of occasions, literally throughout our work, all through South Florida. And it generally is an issue that comes up in particular when you're dealing with a waterfront site. Because the value of waterfront sites is such that it tends to push for density and for higher, you know, higher, higher density, therefore height-type projects. This is a mid-rise project, not a high-rise project, but it's an issue that we've seen in the context of both. Again, here in Dade County, we've seen it a lot in Palm Beach, particularly in the city of West Palm Beach. And every time we get into a situation like this, the issue comes up about the impact of the project we're proposing vis-à-vis the adjacent single-family houses. It has been our experience looking at those situations in other cities that there is a recognition by the marketplace that waterfront property will tend to push to higher density and therefore more height. And it does not per se, unless it does create a shadowing problem or that kind of thing, it does not, as a, just as an automatic fact, create a decline in property values. So it can be an issue. Generally, it is less of an issue when, when the property is not immediately adjacent to the single-family, but is in fact separated by either a street or, in this case, a waterway. That creates some separation. But we have not found, other than again, in places where there were clear shadowing and that kind of thing, instances where there is a massive deduction in property values, and certainly not one that would take it all the way through the Keystone area, you know, as opposed to just one or two properties. But obviously, some of the people who spoke tonight own those properties right across the water, and I understand their, their concerns. But that, that, there is no guarantee that it's gonna just decrease their values. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next.
Good evening, Chair and Board. My name's John McWilliams. I'm with Kim Lee Horn Associates, addresses at 600 North Pine Island Road and Plantation. So I'm gonna keep it as brief as I can, but I know there were a lot of questions upfront about the status of the review and things like that. But I wanna kind of give, kind of talk about overall the scope of the work that we did. Mr. LeBron spoke to the fact that we're in a transportation concurrency exception area, which means that we don't look at projects from the standpoint of a regional road impact. So although I understand the concerns about, you know, traffic, you know, throughout the city and over towards US-1, things like that, but really, the purview of the review and the TCEA is really the local circulation and the access right adjacent to the site. So that's really what our study focused on. It's unfortunate, but there was a final memo from the city's peer reviewer. I don't believe the board has seen it. It was, it came out on the 5th of January, and they had listed three, you know, it's actually from Kittleson, so it's January 5th. It's a, it's a response to that document, sir. And this document has three items. They mentioned that their comments, but they're actually not. I'll be able to put this in the record. Sorry, I only have one, one, one copy. The first comment was, was relative to a methodology issue, and they, they, the final statement in their, their comment was, so no revisions are required in response to this comment. So there's no outstanding issue there. The second comment was related to the installation of a no-U-turn sign that we proposed at, if you're coming east on 123rd approaching Bay Shore, obviously, if you left the site and you made a right to come out of the site and you wanted to go back to the beach, there's not enough pavement, it's not geometrically possible, nor is there a significant enough distance to weave over to make a U-turn at Bay Shore to head back to the beach. So we would propose to restrict that, and we'd have to put a sign up. So they're just saying that coordination with the county and the FDOT is required. So they were concurring with that, the installation of that sign and that restriction. And then the last comment is related to the turn lane queuing analysis and how the access to the site on 123rd would be laid out. And we do have a fundamental difference of opinion on how to apply the DOT standards relative to that stretch of road. And I'm gonna show you a engineered plan and talk a little bit about our coordination with FDOT on how that road would look. But essentially, they concluded this as FDOT approval of the proposed design is required. That's absolutely true. It's their roadway. It's not the city's. DOT has a policy that they will not give you a final determination on a driveway configuration or a design issue unless you actually submit for a full driveway permit. Well, if you submit for a full driveway permit, there's a certain amount of time before you have to pull a permit. And that means you have to pull a building permit and build the project. Well, we know for a fact, given the preliminary stages of this project, we're not in position to know that within about a year and a half, which is the maximum amount of time that you have with DOT, that we'd be able to ready, be ready to pull a permit. So we didn't go in and pull a permit. Therefore, I can't get anything in writing from FDOT that says, that blesses, you know, the design and what we proposed. I will tell you this, we, when, when the original proposal was out there relative to the car dealership, access was a huge issue for the property owner. And we spent a lot of time working with DOT unofficially, non-binding, as to how we could arrive at getting access to it. I think everybody understands the challenges to access this site, because you have, you have Broad Causeway, you have the tolling gantry over there. So there's gonna be continued cooperation with DOT on that. But we did arrive at a design that we felt comfortable with, submitting for a permit, we felt like had a good chance of getting approved. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull a board up and walk you through it a little bit.
Now, the trick is to get that board in such a way so that it can be seen by the audience. And can we get it on the, on the camera? Do we have a camera that can zoom in on that? All right, now can we get a little closer? Center it better, a little closer. Ah, that's better, okay.
A little down, okay. A little bit more.
Okay, very good.
Okay. So it was a comment from one of the residents about having to modify the bridge. And we actually are not modifying the bridge. If you come across that bridge, you know, there's a section of grass median before you actually hit the structure of the bridge. And what we're showing here is the removal of that grass area, so we can get as much length as we can possible from Bay Shore to the bridge itself. So that, that actually gives us, that gives us about, it looks like another 75 or so feet. We are shortening the left turn lane that goes onto Bay Shore to create the, the back-to-back left turn lane into the site. You can see this, this 50-foot taper right here. And essentially, it actually does give you, just to look real quick, the turn lane into the site's about 105 feet of full width turn lanes, number right here. And the length of the turn lane that we would keep at Bay Shore is 115 feet. So if you use a, a rule of thumb of about 20 feet per car, you're looking at about five feet of storage into the site and five to six, five, excuse me, five vehicles of storage and five to six feet, vehicles of storage into Bay Shore. And we've done that analysis. That's part of what we do in the study. And we determined that the queues during the peak hour would be accommodated in that section. The issue that the reviewer had was, in more suburban or rural locations, you actually try to provide distances in that turn lane for deceleration and then storage? Well, I think anybody knows anywhere in Miami, for the most part, we don't have the room to really provide all of that. So this is very common. If you think, if you've ever been down in the Gables on Lejeune Road coming south in 826, you have back-to-back turn lanes the whole way down. So, so that's where we're at. We're, you know, we have to submit to DOT, obviously, but, you know, we felt comfortable at the rezoning level that, that this was a viable access solution. Now, the last thing, the last thing I wanted to mention was just the overall impact to the project, and I wanna put it in perspective. Again, the independent peer reviewer that the city used reviewed these numbers, and they're in concurrence. They had no issues with the numbers. Actually, they thought the numbers might need to be a little lower, but we disagreed. We felt more, felt more conservative, assuming that the project would generate more traffic. So keep in mind, when we look at traffic, we look at the peak hour. We look at the one hour of traffic, which is the worst case. So there was a lot of comments about 75 more vehicles, 52 units. Remember, not everybody goes to work during the same hour. Not everybody comes home from work the same hour. Not everybody works. Not every unit is, is occupied. Some units are vacant. So the empirical data that's been collected across the country that we use kind of takes into account all that. So understand that in the morning peak hour for this 52 units, the national, the national standard, national equations only said that we'll have about 18 vehicles coming in and out of the site during that one hour. Now, the next hour may be 17, don't get me wrong, but that's the, the highest hours is 18 vehicles total, in plus out. In the afternoon, it's 24, again, in plus out. Again, traffic over, occurs over more than one hour. I wanna put that in perspective, because if you look at a hotel, a hotel use, a 52-room hotel, which is what they're today, if that were reactivated and we used the same standard, it would actually generate three more trips in the morning than this proposed use. Okay? It would generate 21 trips in the morning. In the afternoon, it would, it will generate less. It'll generate about 12 trips less. So when you're talking about traffic cut-through, when you're talking about impacts to 123rd, all of those concerns are valid, but we need to put in perspective of how much traffic this project's gonna contribute to those issues. So I, I think I covered just about everything in, you know, as briefly as I could. I can take any more specific questions if you'd like.
I'm certain that there will be questions as, as we go down the line from our commissioners here. Does this otherwise conclude the rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
Fine. Then at this time, we close the hearing, and now we're open for commission discussion. Commissioners may ask the presenters any questions they care to. And now we'll start with Mr. Pashan to my left.
Thank you. God, where do I start?
Bob, I know you'll find the right place.
Well, I'll figure it out. But I struggle calling this thing a project anyway, because again, as I said earlier, you have no intention of building this. And that's why the, that some of the elements of this are, in my opinion, fatally flawed. And people look past it, because it doesn't really matter. This thing doesn't exist. This is what if, and that's the way it was presented at the Town Hall meeting. This is our concept, that we, we wish to God somebody will come along and build after they give us $17 million. And then you're done. You've heard from a room full of people, the, the developer has no intention to redevelop this despite what the staff report says. There's a, I still haven't reconciled the fact that this building is 125 feet tall. It's 12 floors, 125 feet tall. That doesn't fit in the Bay Shore zone. They show an elevation of 125 feet. The ground, the first floor is only four feet above sea level. I don't know how that works. It's a parking garage. There were questions about the parking garage. I mean, it came up earlier. The city is, the building is required to have 1.5 per residential unit and another 5% for guest parking. According to the economic report, which at first I thought that was an independent study, and it doesn't appear that way, each of these units, each of these 52 units will average in price of $1.64 million. It's a 1,400-foot square foot place, and it's gonna be $1.64 million on the second floor. And I don't know where those numbers came from. So I think they sounded pretty good, because that makes the project financially feasible to whoever wants to buy it. But if I were building it, I'd wanna know what those units would sell for. One point's, and all of the rest of the economic impact pitch was based upon those numbers. And as I looked, I talked, we have a lot of real estate people, and nobody's gonna figure out how that gets to be an average selling price of $1.64 million in a condo, when the guy across the canal's got a third of an acre, 6,000 square feet, and he paid $1.4 million for it. So there's $9 million worth of investment directly behind this property. And when those people spent their money, they had the expectation that that was going to be properly zoned R4. The definition of R4 is it provides a transition zone. This is not the Bay Shore zone. I'll come back to that in a second. The entire length of 123rd Street until you get down to the retail is all R4. It creates a buffer zone for the R1 estate residences in Keystone Point. So this doesn't belong with the quarter of a mile away Bay Shore zone. And apparently, according to the staff, there was a huge outcry during the planning commission, I mean, during the comprehensive plan, to build the Bay Shore zone. Bay Shore zone got snuck in, because there was a guy that lives there that wanted to upscale his, his property. And it was designed to make some non-conforming buildings conforming. So this project, the parking's wrong. 52 $1.64 million units have a staff on the ground. There's a concierge, there's maintenance, there's a valet. Where do they park? They've gotta go park in the guy's townhouse parking lot, because there's no on-street parking. There's no parking nearby. There's no garage. They can come over and park at Albert's house in Keystone Point, I guess, because that's, that's where he's gonna have to go. So there's no handicap parking, just an oversight. It's an intermo, it's a multimodal building. There's no bicycle racks. There's no nothing. That's because this project doesn't exist. If somebody was building it, they would have to look at that. But because this is a mythical building, all of that just says, we'll deal with it later. We'll get it rezoned. And I have a question for the attorney. So we develop covenants. What has, what has to happen at the city council for those covenants to be changed?
Is that you or me?
No, our attorney. I'd prefer his answer.
So your question is, how can a covenant be changed at the city council level?
Attaches to this, which every, I've heard this covenant thing thrown around a couple of times tonight. So if there is a covenant, and the city council rezones this by a supermajority vote, how does the covenant get changed?
The covenant will likely be able to be changed based upon the language in the covenant. So if the requirement is that rezoning be by supermajority vote, I would probably suggest that the covenant require a supermajority to be modified.
So the covenant, that doesn't mean a thing? Exactly.
Well, it, all, all actions of the city are made by, or most actions, made by the legislative body. So to the extent that the legislative body seeks to preserve the covenant and defend and enforce it, it means that for as long as that action is maintained, until it decides to change it. You cannot prevent a future legislative body from changing, you know, taking legislative action on the covenant.
So the covenant gets modified, can be modified?
Yes, just like anything else.
That was my question. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, this isn't gonna be till death do us part. This isn't till the council changes its mind and wants to do something different. So the Shoreline Development Review Committee, I understand you've had, the developers had passed success in getting them to come around to their way of thinking. I don't know about a 25 to a 70-foot setback, what it does to your project. You're already, you're already right on the edge with parking. You don't have enough parking for staff, for residents, and guests. If you add handicap, you don't have enough parking for that. There's a question that came back from the city about looking for more detailed plans about the parking, because it says that some of those parking spaces, while they look nice on a piece of paper, don't look accessible. Yet we're counting them against the minimum. So all of that's to be done later. There's so much of this that's gonna be done later. Trust us, we're gonna get it done, but let's just change the zoning today. And I'm really uncomfortable with that, if nobody understands. So the city also raises, in the LDRs, sidewalks, questions about access to the parking spaces, handicap parking, the delivery vehicles, there's no access for them, emergency vehicles, fire trucks, garbage trucks. We don't know where these things go. This just doesn't look like a lot of room for all of that, and you've got 130 bedrooms in your plan. So this thing to me is, is, it's a, is a two-legged stool. I don't, I don't think it makes any sense. I don't think anybody cares that it doesn't make sense from the developer's side, because they're not gonna develop it. This is a real estate sale, and the guy that's gonna buy it's gonna come back to the city council and go, I can't make this thing work. I can't sell these for 1, 1.6 million dollars each, so I need to get this changed. And that's what we're looking at. So I think I've covered a little bit of ground.
All right. Does that conclude your comments, Bob?
It does, it does.
Do I infer that you are not particularly in favor of this?
Yeah, that's fair.
Because, you know, we're gonna, at some point, have to get to that, so. All right, all right, quiet down. We got a long way to go. Jason?
Yes, I have questions for staff first.
I see, a complete page of notes, page and a half here. It's all right. It's only 20 minutes of 10.
So the first question for staff is, is it against city ordinance to purchase a property, rezone it, and sell the property after you rezon?
The LDR doesn't regulate that. That's a private transaction.
Okay. So if somebody chooses to buy their own property and they would like to rezone it and sell it for profit, they're allowed to do that?
That's out of their property rights.
Okay.
The question, may I interrupt?
Sure.
They don't have the right to rezone it. They have to still go through the process of asking for rezoning.
Absolutely. So if we, correct, 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 correct. I get that.
I misinterpreted what you said.
I'm sorry.
They were, they were the ones that rezoned it.
Oh, no, 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 no. And my second question is, is it, is it, and I think I've brought this up before, but I just wanna make sure that, since we have a lot of new people, residents, you know, here at the first time at the planning commission, is it required by city code to have a detailed site plan when you are applying for land use or zoning change?
No, for initial development, I don't know. Any site plan is only for informational purpose.
Okay. So an applicant can choose to not include anything? Okay. The third question I have is, at this stage of, I guess, the entitlement process, are the applicants required to account for any, let's say, major infrastructure changes such as water main relocations at this stage?
No, because they don't, do not have the entitlement. However, throughout the process, we have, you know, we have sent this to the Public Works Department to review for, and their comments were also provided in the staff report, where the next, you know, available in the water sewer lines are.
Correct. So right now, our, our water and sewer department is checking for more like concurrency.
Concurrent, concurrency, exactly.
Which, right now, based on what the applicant is proposing, there is capacity in our system.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and if you're within the staff report, in the section that deals with that, stormwater management and even available water and sewer from Public Works, it's, it's already included in this analysis.
This is another thing that I've heard that I'm kind of confused on is, is it required by city code for us, or for an applicant's site plan, if they choose to present it at this stage, to conform with like, let's say, other outside development requirements from other agencies that aren't the city of North Miami at this stage? So for example, the shoreline issue that is being brought up, is it our, is it, is it required for them to figure that out or have that settled before they can get?
I mean, the Shoreline Review Committee, it suggests, you know, something that the city can just bypass. I mean, that has to do with our environmental resources, and this is why, you know, this was established. And then all municipalities, they have to comply with that. But at this point, really, they haven't submitted a site plan, or detail, like you mentioned before, detailed site plan. And that's why we know the requirement is that, you know, before any building permit is issued, and just like we do for school concurrency.
Correct.
And then, and then, just like you have to go to DUM. And this, this, if that was to be approved, the building has to go to them. When they go to them, and then you've, you've worked on that side, and then you know that you can get all that entitlement, and then DUM won't approve your permit.
So let's say.
But at this stage, no, it's, it's kind of premature to have detailed site plan without the entitlement.
Correct. So let's say, let's say an applicant was to get a rezoning, a rezoning and land use approval. And at the end of it, once they get past this level in the city council, if they cannot address the issue, the traffic issues, the shoreline issues, whatever water and sewer issues, capacity issues, will they be allowed to even proceed with the project?
I mean, this is no different than any existing property with all specific zoning. You come with a site plan approval, and then you don't meet the requirements. You don't get the approval.
Even if you, even if you were able to rezon the land?
Even if you are, that's exactly what I'm saying. It's so different than that. You can have the entitlement, but if you don't meet the dimensional requirements of the code, you cannot build it.
You can't proceed with the project.
Exactly.
Okay, so, and I'll ask the applicant, so let's say there's a setback issue that, you know, that's being discussed. If they can't design around that setback issue, and the shoreline people are saying, that's it?
No building permits, and then even less so, no COs.
Okay.
And then this is what, you know, the covenant can address. I mean, but this you cannot bypass anyway. You would need DUM approval for any building.
Correct, correct, in Miami-Dade County. That's correct. And let's see, the last, okay, now the question's about the covenant. So does the covenant run with the property owner, or does it run with the land?
It runs with the land.
So let's say, you know, So, let's say, you know, the applicant is able to get something approved here, and they decide to sell it to another entity, and they realize, "Oh, man, we cannot even develop on this property" based upon many things that came up today. It doesn't matter. They still have to adhere to whatever the covenant says. That new, when they sell the property, the covenant remains in place?
It does, and then the new property owner would determine, "Can I live under this covenant?" And if they can't, then that's when they would seek the amendments.
Okay. Which, okay, got it. Okay, I think I got that. And then, let's see. And now I have questions for some of the applicants. I'll start with the shoreline issue. So, what's the, I'm sorry, what's the official name of the agency, the shoreline?
It's a subsidiary of Miami-Dade County, the Shoreline Review Committee.
Is on...
It's administered through DERM and the Planning Department, actually. And it's the Shoreline Review Committee of Miami-Dade County.
Okay. So, in their initial, in your initial, I guess, in their initial correspondence to you, when you approached them about the project, what is the, what's the setback issue that many residents are discussing here today? Because I'm not familiar with it.
If I can just, well, instead of, let me just tell you, I think it will make more sense how the process works with shoreline. When you, when they, they review a project without meeting with you first, they'll look at, "Okay, here's the standards that we have", and they'll say, "Without meeting with you, if you comply with these five things, you don't have to do any mitigation or meet with us." And you could comply with that, and I can tell you that this project would not meet at that level. So, then you have to go in and work with them, and there's a hearing, and there's a dialogue that goes back and forth. And if there are certain elements of their recommendations that you cannot comply with, generally, and in our experience, which is, you know, great over the past ten years, you mitigate those. And we've been...
When you say mitigate, in what forms?
In, you know, providing, it could be paying to a fund, it could be planting something, it could be providing access to another direction. There's many ways to do it, and we're not gonna get into specifics, because it could be a multitude of things.
I just wanted to see if it was monetary or...
It could be a combination of monetary site improvements, improvements to the area, providing, but the bottom line is, we've always been able to work with that committee to successfully mitigate, address their concerns, and ultimately, and sometimes there are modifications to the project. But they've always been able to, we've always been able to get a satisfactory result and get the project approved through shoreline.
So, have you had... So, you're saying you've had similar projects, similar to this, with similar initial comments, where you've been able to overcome the big discrepancy that's being discussed?
Yeah, we do a lot of development, not just in North Miami, but in all the coastal communities of Miami-Dade County. This comes up all the time, and it's always the same result. We're always able to get it approved at the end with that mitigation. It's not like you have to, it's not like a variance, where you have to get a variance. You just have to mitigate and come to a resolution with that board.
Okay. All right.
And if I could just address, I don't know if you can ask me the question, if you don't mind, one other comment you made to staff. On the covenant, just from my experience, let's say we submit a covenant, and it's, as Mr. Hell said, it runs with the land. It's not as though someone's gonna, if we do sell it, it's not as though someone's gonna buy the property and not know there's a covenant, find out later and come beg for change. The first thing that a property owner, certainly a property like this, is gonna do is do what? A title search. And they're gonna find, the first thing they're gonna see is, "Oh, there's a covenant." And if I'm, maybe I'm the attorney on the other side, or someone like me, I tell them, "Okay, to change that covenant, here's what it would take." If a contract is entered, in almost every scenario, a contract to sell will be contingent. If somebody wanted to change the covenant, they'd wanna change first. So, they're not gonna sell the property if they wanted to change. That's why the strength of the covenant is significant, and I think it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be ignored, what Mr. Hell said. Four out of five, I can tell you, just from this project alone, and from, it's very difficult to get four out of five votes here. It's gonna be very difficult to get four out of five votes to change a covenant. So, it's a pretty binding and a pretty strong, you know, restriction on the property. If any other questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
Yes, I have more.
Take your time, Jason.
Oh, I will. Traffic. I have a question for the traffic consultant.
Yes, sir.
North Bay Shore Drive, is that owned by the city or the county?
I believe it's a city-main paint street. It's not a county.
Okay. And there's no future plans to open any curb connections or anything there at this point?
Not related to this project. Absolutely not. Even if it were something that would be publicly acceptable, which it clearly wouldn't be, the elevation difference, we studied, you know, years ago on the site. You could make the site work. You'd be so high up, because it's going over the bridge.
Because of grade change.
Yeah.
Got you. Okay. And you mentioned the methodology. And I saw that we have, you know, at the city, we have our own consultant, you know, that's looking out for our best interests. And it's unfortunate that we don't have a copy of your latest correspondence with them, you know, that wasn't included in the packet, but I think you did a pretty good job at explaining where we're at. Oh, you do? Oh, thank you. I'd like to keep that.
I'm gonna do this from memory, because you have my copy.
Oh, this is my copy. So, the methodology, you've come to, I guess, for the most part, you've come to an agreement with our traffic consultant?
Correct. The only three items were how we determine how much traffic the site generates, which is the first comment, and they flat-out said, "Look, we're talking one or two trips." I believe we actually overestimated the amount of traffic the site would generate. They wanted us to use a different category, a different rate.
A different category from where? From the IT?
Yeah, IT. So, there's mid-rise and high-rise, and there's different categories by the height of the building. And the question for us was, does the parking, the two levels of parking count towards the number of stories in the building? Because the breakpoint for the trip generation rate is ten stories. And we're talking twelve versus ten. So, that's where it came about. We provided, in one of the previous responses, we provided an explanation that if we went with their methodology, the numbers would actually be a little bit lower. So, we said, "We're not gonna change it, because we're a few trips higher, and that's conservative." So, that was the first comment. Second comment was just, "Hey, we want you to put the no U-turn sign up. You need to coordinate." It's kind of like a condition that they're putting on the project.
Safety upgrade.
And the third one is, you know, we have a difference of opinion on what's required for the turn lane, but ultimately, FDOT has to make the decision on the design of that facility. And honestly, we didn't have the opportunity, just because of the timing of the project, to really sit down with the city's peer review and explain the unofficial conversations we have with DOT on how we arrived at the design we had.
That's my next question.
Sure.
So, you're saying that you, at this point, your team wasn't comfortable enough with applying for an access permit from the Department of Transportation?
It's just a question of timing.
Yeah, and that's fine. Although those permits can be extended on a yearly basis.
Well, the new district secretary, it's quite a feat to even get six months more out, and trust me.
Well, I'll take that. I'll take that for granted. Okay. So, then, that said, have you even had a pre-application meeting with FDOT?
Absolutely.
And so, they're okay with the fact that your queue lane, have they seen your queue lane analysis?
Absolutely.
And they believe that, based on what you reported, that six cars is all that stacks that's needed to make a left into the site?
I mean, that's the operational analysis we provided. Again, I don't have a silver bullet email from them that says it's perfect, but we felt comfortable enough at that point to put it on a plan. You know, if you don't provide it here, there's challenges as to where you provide it, so...
And so, what was, because I'm really curious as to what your, what the queuing analysis was based on, what design speed? And also, were they based on estimated IT rates, or were they actually based on field counts?
Well, for the intersection, so for the intersection of a hundred and, excuse me, in Bay Shore and one hundred and twenty-three, we went and counted that intersection.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. And that's, yeah. And then we grow that traffic to the build-out year of the project, so we add more traffic on it. So, that operational analysis that we do with that intersection and the queue length that the operational analysis reports is based upon those field counts. Now, obviously, the volumes going into our site for our queues are our projections, because nobody's making it left at that point today. And the difference of opinion goes back to more, an urban condition versus a suburban condition. When you have these urban conditions, there's a standard, there's a DOT standard that applies that really focuses on making sure that the vehicles don't back out into the main line versus giving enough space for the vehicles to decelerate from a certain design speed and stack, right? You know, for instance, most of the turn lanes in any, in any of the east side of Dade County don't provide the deceleration length and the queuing. We just don't have the room. So, DOTs fall back into urban condition, and their standard is, make sure you have enough room to stack the cars to keep them out of the through lane. And actually, they have a minimum of seventy-five feet of storage, so they almost assume about three to four cars is their minimum. We have a little bit more than that in both directions.
Okay. And then, someone mentioned the right turn, that when you're heading west, that there's a right in to the site, there's a deceleration lane?
Headed west? No, you're coming off the bridge, and you're coming, if you're coming from the east, coming from the barrier island, you're coming, you're coming down the bridge, you're making, all right, there's no right turn lane there. That's all structure right there. It's all bridge.
So, you're proposing to not have a dedicated right turn lane into the site?
We would not be able to have a right-hand turn lane. Honestly, the projections, if you think about a residential project of this density, the projections of traffic that are gonna, number one, come into the site, I shared those numbers with you before, but ones that would actually come from the beach are even lower. Most of the traffic from the distribution is coming to and from the west.
I have a hard time believing that that doesn't warrant a right turn to come in. But that's my...
There's no right turn from the beach?
There's no right turn lane. There's a permitted right turn, but there's no right turn lane. And again, we'd have, we still have to go through the DOT permitting process.
Okay.
I think, was the right turn lane because of what DOT mandates along that roadway, or the developers' plan not to put a right turn lane into that property?
Well, typically, when you put in a right turn lane, you wanna have, there's guidelines to the amount, the volume of traffic that you'd have that would trigger it, because a lot of places, you just don't have the volume. I can tell you right now, I mean, we don't, we expect less than five vehicles in the peak hour to be making that right turn, which wouldn't warrant, based upon DOT's guidelines, a construction of a right turn lane.
And there's two lanes coming from the east?
Yeah, from the east, it's the two lanes from the causeway. So, you'd make the right turn from the through lane, the five or so vehicles that would do it.
There's a right turn lane going onto the bridge, past that property, correct? To go into Keystone Point, the Keystone Point Bridge?
No, there is no right turn lane to go. I'm looking at the...
No. Okay. I don't think there is.
They can zoom in on that. There's not an existing west, excuse me, westbound right turn lane to Bay Shore today. No, there's not.
There's a through lane that you can make a right, but there's no...
Correct. It's a shared lane.
That's all the questions that I have.
All right. Thank you. And so, based upon your questions, Jason, are you leaning in the direction of approval or disapproval at the moment?
Well, there's a lot of challenges to overcome, I would say, with the project. You know, this is one of those situations where I, you know, I think it'd be nice to have something to replace what's existing with a nice development. However, there is a huge concern with traffic, and I understand that, you know, we have these impact analysis and studies. But, you know, there's, I think someone said a level of practicality. And so, it's, I have a hard time believing that this project, even though, you know, it can be approved without a site plan, and it's not required, I have a hard time understanding how this is gonna go forward on the next level by other outside agencies. So, I have to think about this.
All right. Very well. Then we go to the right side, Mr. Ernst.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't doubt you have many questions.
Just a couple. Someone brought up the fact about, and I address this to staff, and I want some clarity on it. Is there an existing water line or pipeline that runs through that property? Mr. Ron, can you address that?
I wouldn't be able to address that. Our city engineer, but however, I can ask them. They're not present to answer that question.
But at the present, we don't know.
Yeah, I can tell. And then they would...
Yet another unknown.
No, I mean, this wasn't really part of the, because, you know, for the whiz mediums, I mean, that wasn't part of the analysis. That's come through the traffic is there, really.
I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, that usually if there is one, there'd be an easement running right through the property, and there is none.
If memory, I believe there is the pipeline, and I believe it is on the south side of the property, close to the sidewalk. I walk over there every day, so I know there's a pipeline going that way. It may be buried. It's probably, well, I'm sure if it was a hotel there, there was an existing pipeline, but I think the pipeline that was referred to was a pipeline that was probably something that we were providing. Do we provide water to, or sewage to the barrier islands or across the street?
I believe it's tied into the system.
It's tied into the power. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'll lean forward here on these mics. You're not the first one to complain about that. My wife tries to watch this at home, and she can never hear anything, so... Anybody that's at home, I'm sure they're having a hard time, too. One of the points that, and I've looked at some of the points that everybody has said, and I always have an issue with spot zoning. And I know we've had, the city has been challenged in the past and has lost cases on spot zoning. So, I would feel comfortable, or I need a clarification from city, if this is challenged as spot zoning, what would be the legal guidelines that the city would follow or the legal arguments to dispute the claim of spot zoning?
So, I do not think that this is spot zoning. Merely because it's a property that would be zoned differently than what's around it, you're not depriving the properties across the waterway to the north of similar zoning, because they are part of that residential neighborhood. This property is separated and is somewhat unique, and we would probably argue that differentiation and uniqueness makes zoning this differently reasonable.
That sounds like spot zoning, right? Ladies and gentlemen?
It may be a spot, but it's not an illegal spot. Sir?
Please.
No more.
With the existing, with the existing property as F-four, I believe, or I'm sorry, R-four, F-four, R-four, what, just give me an example, staff, of what could be put there on an F, on an R-four?
I mean, based on meeting those dimensional criteria, I mean, right now, as it stands, you can put or three stories, about thirty-five, three stories, you know, about twelve units there.
Townhomes?
It can be towns, or multifamily. You can put twelve units.
Sure.
That's, you know, looking at, you know, the density. I mean, the density with twelve unit dwellings per acre and one point zero seven per acre, so twelve point something units, that's a total of three stories.
On December fifth, we had a developer come before us. Many of you may not have known, because you didn't watch or didn't hear about it. But this involved a neighborhood off of West Dixie Highway. Similar situation where they wanted to put a very big bulk building on a piece of property, abutting homes. Far worse situation than what you all are looking at. Trust me. I mean, this was literally in people's backyards. And it was a giant footprint on a very small piece of property. And we, for the most part, shot it down, or we just told the developer. He, in fact, backed off on the project, and I think it's going to probably come back to us to be readdressed in some form or another. But to give you an example, this is not the first time that we've had a developer come with plans to not fit into a community or go along with how the community feels about something. I always tend to wanna side with the community on that. I sided with the community on that project, and I will probably side with the community the way they feel about this, with the fact that if you do allow this, they're not taking into the fact that you could do something just as creative as an R-four and make everybody that has to live with that project drive by it every day, look at it every day, be able to accept it. And I think it's kind of up to the developer. We've been backdoored many times by developers. This ain't landing backdoor at us, this community. And we've had, many of you have lived in city law for a long time, know how many times a developer has changed in that situation. So, I have no optimism that this won't happen with this piece of property. So, I think if this developer is sincere, he would try to find a way to make it work as it's zoned now and not try to get zoning to change something that, in the long run, may not even happen. So, I think, Mr. Chairman, you pretty much know how I'm... So I think, Mr. Chairman, you, you pretty much know how I'm going to vote, uh, against this project.
Aye, aye, aye. That, 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 we wanna get out of here before the sun rises in the east. All right, Mr. Each?
On the staff report on, page fourteen, Article Three, Division Ten, are you with me on that? And what you have in there is an application may propose limitations regarding the use density or intensity, which will be permitted on the parcel proposed, so forth and so on. And in there, you have, uh, density limitations at the development, in other words, this would be the covenant, Declaration of Restrictive Covenant to ensure the following. Density limitation that the, uh, development of the subject property shall be limited to fifty-two units as proposed on the conceptual plan instead of a hundred and seven. Shoreline regulations. And I did read your communications between, um, staff and, 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 and the shoreline. Now, I, I heard some comments today appear that, that like staff wasn't doing their job, or, or this was, uh, uh, taken very lightly. Quite the contrary, uh, you start reading all the communicates between staff and the traffic consultants, between the shoreline people, uh, between the proposed, uh, the, the developers. They put a lot of work into this. And we did our comp plan, we did our land use plan. We put a lot of time into this. And what I see happening is North Miami stagnant. We're not moving. Oh, you have beautiful homes going out in Keystone. I admire that. I walk through there every day, and I come out on North Bay Shore. And I look at that albatross, that White House Inn. And I can tell you, it was a dump back in the nineties. It was a dump back in the eighties. I remember I used to have the Canadian, when I was chief, I had the Canadian students come down. We used to do an exchange program, and I put them in there one year, never again. The place was a toilet. And then, when I'm retired, and I'm out there at six o'clock in the morning, I used to see the ladies of the night coming in. And they weren't coming in from a Broadway play downtown. They were out working. And I would see the, hanging out of the, the back windows there overlooking the, the R one district, overlooking, uh, the properties that were just purchased. And I would see the junkies and so forth and so on there. And it was terrible. And, you know, I'm gonna be proud of my city. And I, I seen today, you, you had this plane flying around all day saying, just outside of Keystone Point, beat this down. It was good psychological warfare, I'll tell you. It was out there all day. Do I have reservations with this project? Yeah, I certainly do. But at the same token, I look at North Miami Beach Trailer City. Trailer City, one hundred thirty-seventh Street, just east of Biscayne Boulevard, they're putting up a beautiful eight-story condo, starting at three hundred and seventy-five thousand. This one's supposed to start at one point six four. And they're saying on the economic impact study that the people that would buy this have to have an income of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. So, are we looking at affordable housing? I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear the comment, please?
And, and it's not relevant. Go ahead, Kenny.
You know, and, and every time we wanna do something in the city to improve it, it gets beat down. Now, many years ago, I lived on a canal, Ocean Access, on the other side of Biscayne Boulevard. One of your neighbors, Sandy Weisberger, he put up that Medical Arts Building. I signed off on it because it was gonna impact me. It was a four-story building on the other side of the canal. But I went along with it in Johnson and Wales landscape. It didn't hurt my property values any. I know what you're thinking, oh, my God, I don't want a ten-story building here. I don't want this, I don't want that. But what do you want? You know, a park. Well, then you buy the land, then we'll put a park there. You can call it, you know?
No, 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 no.
You know?
No comments, please. Your time is up.
You know, this is not North Korea. I have my ideas. You have yours. I, I, I looked through this. And, yeah, I, I, I have some, I, I, I just wonder if we can put that type of a project there, uh, which you mentioned earlier, about the project on Eighth, uh, Ninth Avenue and Hundred Thirty Street that came before us. We had a community meeting after that. They put the cart before the horse. I encouraged them to go a couple of stories higher and put more amenities in there, and put the pool on the roof, so forth and so on, to make it a nice project with a smaller footprint. I wanna see development in this city, but we just keep running development out of here. I'd much rather have seen the auto dealership going there, landscaped properly with the waterfalls and with the opaque glass, where it wouldn't intrude on, on, on the R one district. But, you know, all in all, I'm, I'm looking at this. First of all, this has to go before a super majority. That means four people on the city council have to vote for this. And, well, I'll keep that comment to myself. I, 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 I just don't, um, have any faith in the zoning that's gonna be changed. But this is not spot zoning. It makes sense to put a beautiful project there. I go to other cities. I go to North Bay Village. I see beautiful buildings going up just before I get onto the, the causeway there. I go up to Howlanddale. I go up to North Miami Beach. I see beautiful towers going up. I see, uh, on Eastern Shores, beautiful thirty-story buildings going up there. I mentioned that. You guys wanted to run me out of Keystone Point at your homeowners meeting. Oh, I said, let's put thirty stories with pedestal parking. Oh, my God, this is a sin. Well, you know what, folks? We need development. If we don't have development, the city's gonna die on, 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 on the vine. Now, you, you guys in Keystone, God bless you, you, you got a beautiful community there. I, I, I support you with, with your guard gates and everything else. But that has an impact on traffic. San Souci has guard gates. That has an impact on traffic. Traffic is here. Let, let, let's, let's face it. Traffic is here. It's not gonna go away. But you know what's gonna happen? We're gonna get the traffic from North Miami Beach, but we're gonna get the storage places down here. They're gonna get the tax dollars, and we get their traffic. They're building up beautiful buildings north of us. They're building beautiful buildings to the east of us in Sands, uh, in, in, in Surfside, in Bay Harbor. Beautiful buildings there. Yeah, you can shake your head all you want, but that's the fact. What are we doing here? We're not doing anything. And yes, I'm leaning to support this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kenny. My comments to the developers, having sat on this commission now for, oh, I guess, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. The thing that disappoints me the most, I don't mind the pipe dreams. We, we expect a certain amount of fantasy and fiction. But I'm, I'm really disappointed in the basic elements like grossly insufficient parking. Parking should be double what you're proposing. I, I have no problem with a covenant limiting it to fifty-two units. That's great, you know, the, the larger the footprint, the fewer the units, the more you can sell them for. And certainly, the east side of town with waterfront, uh, deserves wealthy residents looking out at beautiful waterways and Bay Harbor Islands. I have no problem with that. Oh, and yes, there'd probably be some looking out over, over Keystone Point too, but that, that would be just fine. I, I think the canal buffer is quite adequate. I, I reject the concept of spot zoning. We've had that argument a lot in twenty-seven years. My issue to the city attorney and to the commission would be his recommendations. If we were to support this, and obviously, it won't be a unanimous vote, it'll be a split vote, no matter how we carve this, that the covenant be in the strictest possible terms. To require the super majority and to make it really, really difficult to change the covenant. The easier we make it to change covenants, the more they come back and forth fifteen, twenty times. How many times has Biscayne Landings been reworked and rewritten and, and expanded and enlarged, and they're still not finished asking for more gimmies? Uh, so I would favor a very strict covenant. The shoreline regulations, absolutely understandable. And any additional city, county, and state requirements, yes. But the covenant's gotta be very, very strict. The traffic doesn't really bother me. Traffic is here. We missed the boat thirty years ago on development, and the traffic came. And we have no resources to deal with it. I think that the ingress and egress can be reasonably managed, and fifty-two units is nowhere near as bad as filling every room at the old White House Inn. Between the tourists and the hookers, certainly the Johns had to get there somehow. So, um, traffic, this doesn't, that does not scare me anymore. You ever, you want traffic, wait for some car accident on ninety-five Southbound in rush hour in the morning, right below Hundred Twenty-Fifth. You can't get to ninety-five because Seventh Avenue, three lanes south, is a parking lot. Can't even get across Seventh Avenue. So the, the traffic is here, whether we like it or not. And the only way we're gonna have the resources to expand city services is with reasonable, responsible development. Yes, I suppose these guys probably wanna sell this for a lot more money, and that's gonna make it very difficult for somebody else to come in. But, you know, that's not my problem. That's gonna be theirs. They overpaid. I think they did. Irrelevant. That was their choice. Um, I'm prepared to support, uh, the presentation, the proposal as requested at this time, because this could be a decade or two before anything actually comes out of the ground. And we all may be dead and buried before we see that. Uh, so I'm inclined to support this at this time, which means, Jason, you become the unenviable.
Swimbuck.
Yes, that's exactly the word. So we are now two and two. In a few moments, we're gonna have to call for a vote, and you're gonna have to decide which way you wanna come down on this.
Are we able to? Are we able to discuss what, uh, some of the language of a potential covenant could say? Or, or can our city attorney give us some type of confidence, um, that the chair is saying that?
Well, the planning commission can ask for specific language. We can, we can suggest any number of things.
Okay. Okay, so then, um, I'd like to make a motion to support the project.
Okay. All right, motion is made to support the project, uh, the rezoning issues.
What? Don't, don't go threatening people.
So, Mr. Chair, the, the procedurally, there should be two votes.
Yes.
First vote on the plan amendment and the second vote on the zoning.
All right. So at this point in time, do we have a motion on the plan amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right, move on the plan amendment. We have a second.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor. Let's take a voice vote. Bob Pashon?
No.
All right, Jason?
Yes.
Kevin is yes. Charlie?
No.
And Kenny?
Yes.
All right, that passes three to two. All right, now. All right, ladies and gentlemen, you will have to, Kenny, Kenny, don't even go there. Don't even go there. Don't even go there. Ladies and gentlemen, you have the city council to deal with. We are on the verge of making a recommendation. The sergeant-at-arms will clear the room if necessary. All right, now, we passed on the, uh, okay. All right, Mr. Held, we've passed the first item. And now we need the second item, which is the zoning issue. All right, do we have a motion to approve the zoning request?
So moved.
So moved by Kenny East. We have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Jason.
Um, before you take a vote, is there a recommendation on a covenant or something?
Well, if you, before we do this, you would wanna get any issues of the covenant into the record.
Okay, but the covenant is attached.
It's a recommendation, so I.
Yeah. Yeah. We need to recommend they get the microphones fixed.
So I think you can include.
Do you think that's, that's covered in the big bond issue they wanna pass, the microphones?
You can include the recommendation on the covenant. It would be a proffer, not a requirement, so it would be acceptable.
All right. What language would you wanna proffer?
Um, the first thing I think is, is, I guess, we're gonna say that it's automatically known that it goes with the property, right? That doesn't have to be said? Okay. Um, can we tie it to specific, uh, entitlement approvals from agencies, by the agencies?
They wouldn't get a building permit.
Even without it?
So the real, the real point.
Would be, uh, like, uh, if there's a recommendation on number of units or something.
I think that should be.
Everything else is something that we would impose eh, eh, on behalf of the city.
I do not support it, but I would say that there needs to be a maximum number of units. There needs to be a minimum number of parking spaces. So if you're gonna have a hun- I got a, I got a two million dollar condominium. I got one parking space, and my guests gotta park on the street two blocks away. I think the project is doomed from the outset.
I, I agree.
So a maximum number of units, a minimum number of parking spaces.
So rather than a nu- so you can be a recommendation that the number of units do not exceed, and then the parking rate, number of parking spaces be no less than two per unit or something like that.
Which I think would make a lot of good sense.
Why, why don't, can we, if we knock this down to, say, fifty units, would that increase the amount of parking spaces? Because that, that's a valid point.
This is already one floor too tall.
So, so let's, let's knock it down a couple of more, a couple of more apartments.
Well, if you knock it down a floor.
I, I don't, I don't believe that the conceptual plan that was submitted is a binding construction document. That's my opinion.
No, it's not, but it doesn't even work.
I, I, I don't understand how, if, if an item that's submitted to us is not something that it can be constructed with, I don't understand why it needs to even be talked about.
Well, that's a matter of strategy on the developer.
That was one of the reasons why I voted against, not so much for the, against the project, but for the incomplete information and the unpreparedness of, of the applicant.
But our ci- our city code does not require this, these items to be, to that level of detail that many people are talking about. I understand that this is what we would prefer and it's best, but that's not what's required. And I, I don't think that it's fair to put that burden on the applicant. I, I mean, to me, I see this as a conceptual plan. I'm a design professional. We change stuff all the way through the beginning, all the way to when we first, when we get our initial building permit.
I agree with that.
And I can tell you, and I can tell you, there's many times where the plan completely changes, and the only person or entity that can affect that is staff. And I have a hundred percent confidence in staff, that they're gonna do that at the next level. That's my opinion.
This conceptual plan doesn't fit in the zoning, by the way. The zoning being requested.
So then why don't, why don't, why don't we, we, we have here density limitations. The development of the subject property shall be limited to fifty-two units. We wanna keep it at that, or do we wanna drop it down?
Yeah, we certainly don't wanna go any higher. Do a maximum of fifty-two units.
I think, I think it's fine if we cap it at, at fifty-two.
Because when they come back with the plan, they might have to have less.
They're gonna have, they're gonna, might have to have less.
But they can't have any more than fifty-two.
And, and I would suggest that we also ask that they have two parking spaces per unit, because if there's one thing that annoys me with all of these high rises, guests have nowhere to park.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Something's been troubling me, and I'd like to maybe try and clarify it for the board. It's permitted height of the building. It, it's my impression that there are exceptions to allow a building to exceed the maximum building height. Um, so th- there's probably some language in the code that allows certain elements of the building, uh, above the roof line to.
Parapets. And mechanical equipment.
Yes, so what you see is the, as the main roof at one twenty-five, it does not violate the code. It is permitted under the code. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I, I would lo- I would like to clarify further. There's also the base floor elevation eh, eh, along the, eh, eh, this area, which is ten feet. The base floor, and then we're keeping, also keep in mind, the city has a free board, part of the floodplain regulations, which you are now, you know, a member. So there, eh, eh, there's another foot, so that's where you start building, 'cause this may, eh, I take, you know, what's happening, 'cause that includes that, that ten feet. So that's why, you know, the maximum might, it appears to be at one twenty-five, but including that base floor, base floor elevation.
Eh, eh, everything's included in the height.
No, no, no.
No, your reference point from where you start zero.
The finished floor elevation.
That's correct.
Right. Yeah, when they top off a building, they top off the top floor. They don't top it off after they add a cooling tower, elevator shafts. Uh, and, and, uh, if you, you look at, uh, diagram, I'm trying to remember the website.
So I just wanted to clarify that for the board.
List the building heights.
Correct.
You'll see a, a, a difference in, in the heights, because if they add a tower to it, then they, they would say, well, our building's five hundred and fifty feet. In reality, the, the building structure itself is not five hundred and fifty feet.
And I think they put out up to twenty percent of the height.
'Cause they add on.
To shield.
Tower height, walls, anything else.
So we can, I guess we're putting a limitation, well, the limitation on the building height's already, so it's already in the code.
Deal with height, but, um, you can just say that a covenant limiting the number of units and then, and then amount to be determined by the city council, or you can recommend a number. It, it shouldn't be arbitrary, though. I mean.
Yeah, I think the limitation of the units, I think we all feel comfortable with that. And then the parking issue.
The parking, two units.
What's, what's the?
So, so the plans say it's one and a half per unit.
What's code requiring?
The code requires one and a half per unit plus, you know, eh.
Plus five percent over that number for guest parking.
Over that for, for guest parking. And, and which I take, you know, that can be a little problematic. And then, and it, and I take, you know, requiring two parkings per unit plus the five percent for this.
That's gonna be.
I, I take, you know, that's something.
Well, the two hundred would, you could ra- you could phrase it in such a way as to include your five percent. The problem we've got. The problem we've got with all these units, the first thing they wanna do is get a variance to waive parking. And then, nobody has any place to park. Are we allowed to, are we allowed to say that...
The covenant can include that, no parking variance should be issued, you know?
Okay, yeah, let's put that...
No parking variance should be issued.
After, after the, after the developer, we, we make this agreement with the developer, eh, they, in turn, they designed the docks for the homeowners association, right? Before the homeowners association takes over that condo. So they have to go along with the developer's, um, docks that are created, is that not correct? By, by, say, law?
Yeah, there's a body laws in there.
And, and, and that homeowners associ- association cannot change those docks to their liking. In other words, if they're like, well, we don't, we don't care about the parking variance.
And from going and getting, revising the permits for the docks. I mean, assuming they were able to get the permits in the first place, which is not an easy task.
They have the variances in place...
For docks?
On, in the docks, the developer. Those docks are turned over to the homeowners association once, once the project is done. That homeowners association has to live with that, they can't change that, is that correct? Or can they have a vote of the homeowners association?
If they can fund it. That's the issue, can they fund it?
Right, they can say, screw that, we want, you know, we wanna limit the amount of, 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 of parking spaces in that.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the dock limitation question.
Yeah, wha- what we need to do, I think, is, is be very firm on the number of units and very firm on the parking spaces as recommendations. Because that's the first thing government wants to give away, uh, waive parking. And in that location, there is nowhere for people to park.
There's no, there's no overflow parking available.
Yeah, there isn't, and it, the parking must be self-contained for all the owners, plus their guests.
And the staff.
That covenant follows through to the homeowners association, correct?
That's, that's, that's for any person, any property owner.
Well, that asks, Mr. Held, that's a good point, the covenant follows through to the homeowners association if this coun- if the city council so adopts it.
Yes, and if it's accepted by the applicant.
No, it's his problem, yes.
They're not gonna, I mean, just because you recommend it doesn't mean that they're gonna go to the council and say, yes, we agree and...
Are we allowed to hear their input as to whether or not the two cov- covenant items will be acceptable to him?
Absolutely.
And, and that raises another question, uh, we used to get a report on what the city council did every month. That report stopped a year ago. We'd like, we'd really like to get a synopsis of what the city council does on resolutions.
All right, so let's, let's get those comments written.
All right.
So the... Do we want anything for tra- for outside agencies? I mean, make, you say they, they have to do it.
But, Mr. James, it, it would, might be worthwhile to hear what the applicant has to say about the covenant.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, we appreciate the dialogue, I just wanted to get up and say, um, at the very beginning, I told you all that we would be more than amenable to the exact type of discussion. Um, we didn't talk about parking before, but as to parking, I can tell you internally, you're, you're very right. This is a conceptual plan. We wanna build this thing, it's gonna be a little different, but we want, we didn't have to show you anything, we wanted to show you what we wanted to build here. We th- we felt after reviewing the plan that more parking was probably warranted. We're comfortable with what you're discussing, we think two parking spaces a unit is reasonable. We did include five percent, there is guest parking there now. We submit to you that more is, is reasonable, and we're agree, we'll agree to the condition on no parking variances. We, we think, we think it's all reasonable and we appreciate that discussion.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have those two recommendations, and then the, the recommendation that they comply with all the regulatory agencies.
That's required by the law.
Right, we know, but this, when you get into those backroom discussions at county hall...
And any change in the covenant would require a supermajority vote of the council.
Yes, that's important. If we're gonna do this, make the standard high, make it worth living there. We cannot burden that intersection any more than it's already. Uh, and, you know, unfortunately, that's the first thing they all want, is a waiver on parking, and that's unacceptable at that site.
What else we have?
That's it.
Those are the items that I... Okay, so we wanna, do we take a motion?
Take a vote, take a vote on the, on the recommendations for the covenant.
Well, now, we've already, we've already passed the items.
Well, you, you, no, you...
No, you haven't taken a vote on the zoning map amendment. There's a motion that's been seconded, and you can amend your motion to include the discussion that we had about the covenant.
I would like to amend my motion to include the discussion we have about the covenant.
Fifty units maximum, two units, two parking spaces per unit.
That's correct.
No variance, no parking.
No parking variance.
And supermajority.
And supermajority, thank you.
The chair accepts those amendments?
Wait a minute.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye. I'll go along with the amendment.
All right, we got four to one on the amendments.
Let me, let me...
I'm assuming, Bob, you voted against the amendments?
Yes.
Okay, fine, all right, four to one.
Uh, morning.
What happened? They voted?
Yeah, four to one.
You know, you know, there's a gentleman that came up before, and he talked about site plan review. And I, I can understand if it's, if, if any way, I, you go, you go up to, uh, the Sunny Isles, you get a heck of a lot more of a detailed plan than you would here. And, 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 and that makes sense, because there's a lot of confusion.
There's actually a case out of Gainesville that says you cannot require, uh, an applicant to show particular use when they come in to rezonate.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, that's correct. And that...
Now, I think the only...
If you don't make sense, that's...
Probably bad strategy, but, yeah.
And sometimes it's...
All right. What is our next planning commission meeting?
Can I ask, can I ask a question of what we just think we did? On parking spaces, what are we actually saying? Two units per dwell- two spaces per dwelling unit is what the building requires, period?
No.
It requires one point five.
No, 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 but the covenant.
Yeah, we're requiring...
Currently, it's one point five plus five percent.
We're requiring two spaces per unit.
Plus the five percent, yes.
And that includes guest parking?
No, 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 in addition to.
And guest parking is still five percent?
Five, five percent, it's in the code.
So if...
No, but we've, we've increased the min- the code since the minute...
So if you want ten percent, you...
And we're recommending much higher standard. Because there is no place for the people to go.
We're not changing the five percent, that's still taken.
It's a, absolutely, it's still a much, we don't know.
Council, does that need to be included, the five percent, does that need to be clarified? With the two point oh, is, or is it already understood that we're only...
Okay, we don't, we... I think it needs change, I think it needs increased then, because there are no options for parking in this place.
Well, the problem is you don't have any, as you brought out, there's no parking for staff. And that facility is gonna require some staff. They're not all gonna come there by taxi.
I don't, I don't know how deliveries are made for, uh, move-ins or deliveries for maintenance.
Loading's...
That gets worked out on the site plan. There's some security, there's, I mean, there's a bunch of that.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of issues, this, that the plan has to be redrawn and...
Plan and design professionals.
Yeah, and, and we understand that. All right, so clarify, we have a motion and second on the recommendations for the covenant. All in favor again, let's be sure of what we're doing.
Aye.
Aye, okay, four to one on the covenant. Now, we adopt the, the zoning change, all right? We need a motion on the zoning change.
So moved.
Seconded, moved and seconded, and now let's do a voice vote, Bob?
No.
Jason?
Yes.
Kevin, yes? Charlie?
No.
Yes.
Kenny, yes, all right, three to two. Thank you for that. Now, staff, what is the, the date for our next available planning commission meeting?
March sixth.
March the sixth, oh, good, nothing in February. Oh, that's wonderful.
Can I, can I ask?
No, no, February.
Can I, I wanna...
Wait, don't go away.
Don't go away? I was so hoping to go away.
Oh, February.
February sixth, sorry.
February sixth.
All right.
Oh, February the sixth, oh.
Can I, can I, can I ask the chair?
Yes.
I'd like the staff...
All right.
What, what I'd like to see happen, there's some, I'd like to see the public works director here, I'd like to know what the water supply is, the capacity of five, we say we can only do five thousand units. But if FIU's building, if the jockey club is building, it's on our system, I'd like to know how we're gonna get to that five thousand, I'd like to have the public works director here.
Whistler?
Whistler.
Whistler. And, and explain that to the count, the second thing I would like to have is the CRA director here. Okay, Community Redevelopment Agency Director here. To let us, fill us, fill this board in on what their program is for the transportation overlay district. And then the third thing, is I think it would be imperative that we have the Economic Development Specialist here to tell us what his plans are, or her plans are for that unit, if they're gonna try to bring in buildings, companies, who are they gonna try to bring in to...
Th- this is a problem, the CRA does not talk to the planning commission. We do not know what they're doing. The city doesn't talk to us, we've no idea what the bond issue's all about. Uh, you know, there's just lots of voids out there.
I mean, uh, eh, to answer your first question, the first part of your question about the water, and I think, you know, one starting point could be the water supply work plan. 'Cause this basically tells you, you know, based, or eh, for, for several future, what are the availability of those infrastructures, and based on the eh, current, you know, population growth, you know, all the other growth factors, you know, eh, the drivers of growth in the city, our, our current infrastructure are able to, eh, to, you know, address those.
Can we get him?
No, 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 yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I can share with you, I can share with you that...
The last time we had these discussions, the water department came in and effectively said that, based on their agreements with the county, we can add five thousand more housing units, and that's it.
Yeah.
So, as, until the water system is upgraded.